Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Do we have a closed session report?
Mayor, members of the council, there are no items to report.
Thank you. Then can I ask Annika to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Mayor Thomas?
Here. Are there any items for agenda review?
Miss Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight to be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Call for a vote?
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. And seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring March 2023 as Women's History Month, and Heidi DiNardo is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the city council. Each March, Women's History Month provides an opportunity to honor the trailblazing women who have shaped communities across the country, and tonight, it's my pleasure to read the following proclamation. Whereas the 2023 theme for Women's History Month is celebrating women who tell our stories, to celebrate women's voices and honor their achievements, and whereas throughout history, despite hardship, exclusion, and discrimination, women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made vital contributions in recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and the peace movement to create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas celebrating women who tell our stories recognizes women, past and present, who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, television, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, news, and social media. Now therefore, the month of March 2023 is hereby proclaimed Women's History Month in the city of Simi Valley to encourage residents to recognize and celebrate the women in their lives who make history every day. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 2, Public Statements on Appointments. Oh. Thank you. Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentation and informational reports, and Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 3A1, Selection of Two City Council Members to Conduct Community Projects Grant Review Committee Interviews, and Cynthia McCullough is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the city council. The city council established the Community Projects Grant Program for the disbursement of funds received from Waste Management for community programs and projects. The funding requests from local nonprofit organizations are reviewed by a review committee prior to consideration by the city council. The review committee consists of one representative from each one of the four neighborhood councils, one representative from the Council on Aging, one representative from the Youth Council, and one community at-large member. The community at-large member is interviewed and nominated for appointment by two city council members. The recruitment for this position opened on February 17th and closed on March 3rd to allow staff sufficient time to assess any potential conflicts of interest of applicants, which will remove the need for an alternate. We have received a total of 11 applications. To accommodate the program's timeline and ensure timely distribution of funds to the recipient organizations, interviews need to be scheduled the week of March 20th. All the nominees for the review committee will be presented by the city council for appointment at the April 10th meeting. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council appoint two council members to conduct interviews and nominate a prospective community at-large member to the Community Projects Grant Review Committee. This concludes the report, and staff is available to respond to questions.
Councilmember Littler?
I actually have a question. This really probably is more for the attorney, if I could ask. I understand that we are having this discussion to assign two of us to basically interview who will be the at-large representative discussing grants. If we, any of us, are potentially involved with a foundation or nonprofit organization that might be applying for a grant, does that mean we should recuse ourselves from serving on the selection committee of the representative?
It would be advisable for any council member in such a position to recuse him or herself from that issue.
It makes it easy because three of us, I believe, might have a problem with that.
And I know that I have a problem with.
So that, so we're just picking someone.
We're selecting. Correct.
Well, the idea is you always want to avoid anyone alleging that there's been any impropriety and the process wasn't fair. And if anybody who wasn't selected can make that argument, that'll put the council in a difficult position. So it's better to be.
Do we at this point know who the applicants are?
Yeah, do we know who the applicants are? Because that would make.
Staff can read a list of the applicants to see if there's any known involvement, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Body Brain Train, Buena Vecino, Free Clinic of Simi Valley, Friends of Simi Valley Police Explorers 2910, Gigi's Playhouse, Kid Gloves Boxing Foundation, Los Robles Children's Choir, Many Mansions, New West Symphony, Sarah's House Maternity Homes, SIARUS, Siwa International, Shepherd of the Valley Lutheran Church, Simi at the Garden, Simi Sunrise Charitable Foundation, Simi Valley Cultural Association, Simi Valley Education Foundation, Simi Valley Friends of the Library, Simi Valley Historical Society, Southwest Ventura County YMCA, and the Ark of Ventura County.
So is that all of us that cannot?
No.
I have no association with that.
I don't either. We've had our Rotary Club in the past. That's why, but they're not listed there, so.
And I, I'm sorry, I need to be recused. There is at least one organization there that I'm affiliated with.
Same with me. I have to recuse myself.
So now there's three.
So there's three of you left, so it's Rocky.
Rocky, you're one because you're new. Wait a minute, we didn't even rock, paper, scissors.
I'll do it with Rocky if you, if you like.
All right, cool.
Okay.
Thank you, and exciting that there's so many interested in the program. Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion.
I would move that Councilmember Rocky Rhodes and Councilmember Kavanaugh be appointed to conduct interviews and nominate a prospective community at-large member to the Community Projects Grant Review Committee.
Second?
Call for a vote?
The motion passes unanimously.
Oh, wait, there's more.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 3A2, Selection of Two City Council Members to Conduct Interviews and Nominate a Perspective Commissioner for One Unscheduled Vacancy on the Area Housing Authority of the Ventura County Board of Commissioners, and Eric Chen is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the city council. The area housing authority of the County of Ventura serves seven jurisdictions in Ventura County, including the city of Simi Valley. It is governed by a 15-member Board of Commissioners. Each jurisdiction appoints two commissioners, and one resident commissioner is jointly appointed by all the represented jurisdictions. Due to the recent resignation of Commissioner Marcus Crouchfield, the city has one unscheduled vacancy to fill with the term commencing upon appointment and ending September 30th, 2025. To avoid a prolonged vacancy on the board, a recruitment has already been initiated and is scheduled to conclude on March 9th. Through outreach, including press release, City Focus Newsletter, SV Television Bulletin Board posting, and social media posts, the city has received nine applications to date for the vacancy. It is anticipated that the interviews will be conducted the week of March 13th and may take up to three hours. The process will conclude with the appointment of the new commissioner by the city council at the April 3rd city council meeting. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council appoint two city council members to conduct interviews and nominate a prospective commissioner to fill the unscheduled vacancy. This concludes staff reports. Staff's available for questions.
Councilmember Judge?
I have no problem serving on that committee.
I would volunteer myself as well.
May I make a motion?
Okay.
I move to appoint Councilmember Littler and Mayor Pro Tem Judge to interview and nominate applicants to fill one unscheduled vacancy on the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners.
Second? Call for a vote?
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 3B1, Overview of the Ventura County Continuum of Care and Countywide Regional Efforts to Address and Prevent Homelessness, and Mara Mulch is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the city council. As we all know, the issue of homelessness is of significant concern both here in California and nationwide. With having new members recently joined the city council, city staff invited Ms. Jennifer Harkey, Program Director for the Ventura County Continuum of Care, to provide an overview of the COC, countywide services, and the regional collaboration across all cities within the county to address homelessness locally. I will now turn things over to Ms. Harkey.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, councilmembers, city staff, and also public attendees. My name is Jennifer Harkey, and as was stated, I serve as the Program Director for the Continuum of Care, which is countywide. Ultimately, we receive federal and state funding through federal grants, also state grant funding. I'm going to talk through some of the programs that we have for countywide efforts, which also serve the city of Simi Valley. So ultimately, we have a regional planning body that is authorized under HUD, the Housing and Urban Development, at the federal level. We receive dollars through these federal grants to help run programs here locally and oversee the funds that are ultimately contracted and subcontracted through local organizations. Some of that funding is really to address homelessness, but ultimately, we have several programs throughout the county, and some of those may be emergency shelters, rental assistance, street outreach projects. We also have some new state funding that has given us some more flexibility to be able to run programs such as Project Room Key, for example, where we've been able to interim, provide interim sheltering for clients. We also have many different collaborations and partnerships, and that includes with city staff here within the city of Simi Valley, and also local organizations such as the Samaritan Center and also Salvation Army here within the city. So this is just to give you an idea of our governance structure. If you were to go to venturacoc.org, that is the website where we have our governance documents, and it gives you kind of an idea of how VCOG, so the Council on Governance across, across the county, is ultimately in an advisory capacity. So we work closely with VCOG to determine what's going on within those cities, what do those gaps and needs look like, and then how are we going to address that with some of the funding that comes down through federal and state. We have a Continuum of Care Board that oversees these funding decisions. We use a lot of data analysis, and this comes through the Homeless Management Information System, which is also known as HMIS. That helps us capture data to really take a look at how many people are we serving? What's the length of time people are experiencing homelessness? And how are the programs on the ground actually providing those outcomes and ultimately helping to house people? We have several committees that you'll see here. So ultimately, the Data Performance and Evaluation Committee is what helps us analyze those programs and determine where those gaps and needs are. We have a Public Information Outreach Committee that serves through social media, making sure people understand a little bit about what the programs are and what those needs are to address homelessness. And then we have a Housing and Services System Committee that has many different stakeholders at the table, including homeless service providers, who are really doing the work on a daily basis. And we have a couple of subcommittees as well. The subcommittees are really focused on addressing veterans and youth homelessness. Those are two of our target populations, where we have special types of grants and funding here throughout the county to help end homelessness among veterans and youth. Okay, so this is ultimately what our plan to prevent and end homelessness was approved by our Board of Supervisors back in 2018. The Board of Supervisors had approved these back in that, in 2018 to determine where we were going with those funds. And this year, the board has authorized us to hire a consultant over homeless coordination, homeless services, and analyze where we need to move over the next two years. Homeless prevention has been a huge effort over this pandemic. We have had a huge rise in rent costs across our county and a lot of calls for service to help keep people housed. So a lot of our focus now has really been on the prevention side and making sure that we're keeping people in their housing once they're placed, or if they're facing an eviction, that we're helping with either rental assistance or housing navigation. Another one to point out here is really around supportive housing. So permanent supportive housing is a lot of where our federal funds go into. And I just want to clarify, so supportive housing is for those who are chronically homeless, and they have a disability of some sort. So that disability could be mental, physical, developmental, or even substance use disorders. And so ultimately, we have these funds that come through HUD to allow people to have the support through case management and wraparound services. And then I wanted to point out also about navigation center, also known as emergency shelter. So we do have navigation centers or emergency shelters in other places around the county. We have a 50-50 cost-sharing agreement in some cities through the county and the city that have helped support some of those sheltering efforts. And that is really intentional to help move people through shelter and ultimately into housing. So this is our last point in time count in 2022. So just want to clarify that we just had a homeless count in January of this year. So we don't have that data quite yet to roll out. It will be rolling out later this month. And so my plan is I will be presenting to VCOG on May 11th with the state of homelessness. And once that is done, we go to the Board of Supervisors as well, and then I can come back to council and kind of give you a status of where we are this year. And that'll give you an idea of how many. I can say this, we do see a slight increase from the prior year. So we will be reporting an increase. We haven't had a huge increase in resources this last year as far as housing units, supportive housing, or additional sheltering beds. But we do expect those to come online this next year or two through both state home key projects and also some local 50-50 cost-sharing through state grant funding, such as the encampment resolution funds. So this just shows you from 2020 to 22, we had a massive increase over the two years. And really, that speaks to what I was talking about with the high rent costs and the increasing need to help prevent people from becoming homeless. This gives you an idea of the total persons sheltered versus in transitional housing, which are longer-term, 24-month programs that really, really are intentional about employment services and getting people connected. The unsheltered homeless number is speaking to those who are not in a place for human habitation. So some of those could be recreational vehicles that don't have hookups in vehicles or other types of locations. And then those who are at risk, it's a little bit more difficult for us to capture. So we do work with the jails, the hospitals, our school system to help get a better idea of who is actually on the verge of losing their home. But we do also gather data through our homeless prevention funding and those who are calling for service through places like Interface 211. And this gives you a comparison across the cities. So you will see Oxnard and Ventura as the highest numbers. I also call attention there to the number of what we call non-congregate sheltering, and that is through Project Room Key. That was really under the emergency response during COVID. And so we know those are temporary sheltering beds, but also speaks to the need. So we know that people want shelter and are utilizing it now, and so there is a need for increases there. We also see Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, Santa Paula, and then it kind of goes down from there. So subpopulation data, chronic homelessness, like I was talking about earlier, is really those that have that longer length of time being homeless, a year or longer, and a disability of some sort. So they could qualify for permanent supportive housing units. And that's what our greatest need is right now, is to increase what we call PSH. So those supportive housing units, we have some more units coming online this next year or two, and some of that is through the state home key funding that we've applied to to help convert either motels. that we've applied to, to help convert either motels or local buildings into actual housing units. It's just really a nice, creative approach to see. Some of these others were seeing a rise in those with mental health issues as well as those who are fleeing domestic violence. And we did increase funding for those fleeing domestic violence this last year through the Coalition for Family Harmony, and they added some additional sheltering as well as transitional housing. So some of our current initiatives are really around crisis response. So like I was talking about with the non-congregate sheltering model, we see that as being really highly successful in the operations that are happening today. But looking at how we can get creative even more with some of those state dollars that are coming through the continuum. And then I spoke to the domestic violence increase in support as well. The other organization that assists with those fleeing domestic violence is Interface Children and Family Services. They are another strong partner, as well as in the youth, youth homelessness. And then we have a Family Justice Center that's also expanding. So there is a coordinated entry system. This operates under the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS. And this coordinated entry is really about no wrong door. So we want to make sure if someone's calling an organization that's linked to HMIS or walking in the door for services, that they are getting an assessment completed and directed to the appropriate referral. We have 34 partnering agencies, and that's still growing. One of our most recent partners now is Gold Coast Health Plan. They are our Medi-Cal managed care provider, and they're expanding services under CalAim through the state dollars. So we're excited to have them coming on board to provide additional support through street medicine. We also have more supportive services to help with housing retention. This also speaks to those who are being assisted through housing assistance, but then you can see that 60% of our referrals are actually for rapid rehousing. Rapid rehousing is for security deposits or rental assistance for those who have already lost their homes. So this is really intended for clients who are currently in shelters or they may be, they may be facing an eviction, and they need to already relocate. So it's really important to have that housing navigation support. And then 96 placements in supportive housing. This was from the prior year. But as you could see, the number or the increase in people who became homeless, we were still able to house more, more individuals who were chronically homeless, even through that really tough rental market. And I'd say that's a lot of it has to do with the coordination with our housing authorities, the partners we have there with vouchers and emergency housing vouchers. This is just a snapshot of the partners we work with on a regular basis. This is also available at venturacoc.org. Under Find Help, you go to Pathways to Home, and it gives you the direct contacts on how to get help. The one thing I would call attention to here is 211. So calling 211 can help you get directed to the service needs, and they can provide assessments by phone. This gives you an idea of the amount of inventory that we currently support through the Continuum of Care funding, as well as the state grant funding. There's quite a bit of rapid rehousing, supportive housing, still a need to really increase that shelter number. And so you will see that highlighted as temporary, and those are Project Room Key beds. Also, our Veteran Affairs supportive housing vouchers. We have many veterans who are holding vouchers, and they're unable to lease them up. And that is really having to do with the fair market rate here throughout the county. And so FMR, as we're, what I was referring to, limits the amount that we can pay with vouchers. So this just gives you an idea in comparison to what the rent cost is compared to that FMR and what people could afford. So our Continuum of Care Board recommendations, this was from our prior year. So I spoke to some of this already with the youth and the youth veteran, youth and veteran homelessness. Also encouraging jurisdictions to find strategies to reduce unsheltered homelessness. And that's part of the memorandum of understanding that we have that's countywide that was also approved through the Board of Supervisors. Reorganizing our Housing and Services Committee, and that's really a big focus on prevention. And then we are including people with lived experience. I'm happy to say this has been a highly successful effort. We started this back in November, and the work group is very active. There are seven people that are currently participating, and we actually have a grant that's helping to provide stipends to those who are actively engaged. And there is my contact information. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jennifer, can you go back one slide? I just wanted a little bit more explanation on the note there. Formalized work group to include people with lived experience. What exactly is that?
Yeah, thank you. So the Lived Experience Work Group is really inclusive of anyone who has experienced homelessness. And it's really targeted at those who have experienced homelessness over the last five years. More recently, looking at programs they've participated in or their experiences through being unsheltered or in shelter so that we have a better idea of what our system looks like and where are those barriers or gaps.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Harkey, Jennifer, thank you for all that you do. An important topic and, and complex solutions. I have been battling mentally with the different names for the housing. And I'm hoping you could give me a, what does, what does supportive housing look like in comparison to transitional? I know that there's a timeframe on transitional of 24 months. But what does that look like? What kind of services are available in each type of?
Thank you, Councilmember. So permanent supportive housing has funding through HUD, so it's very restrictive. We have to verify that the person who goes into supportive housing has been homeless at least a year or longer and has a certified disability. So that has to be certified through a physician or clinician. Based on those two criteria, supportive housing has case managers and also brings along mental health services, healthcare services, and connects all of those wraparound services in place.
Are those services generally onsite with the?
Typically, typically, they're onsite. In some cases, we have what we call scattered site model, where like Ventura County Behavioral Health may have some lease agreements with landlords throughout the county and provide services by coming and, and actually seeing the clients there on a weekly basis or monthly. Transitional housing is termed at 24 months. So it is really focused more on employment and increasing benefits so that someone can transition successfully to permanent housing.
And to get into that housing, you also need a case manager, but you're focused on employment as opposed to dealing with the mental health?
Correct.
Okay. And sheltering beds, in that same discussion, sheltering beds are the least permanent of all of them, right?
Yeah, so emergency shelter is actually designated as 90-day sheltering. That's really what the model should look like. Although we know it has been really difficult to move people through shelter without having the housing. And many people are holding what we call housing vouchers or housing choice vouchers, but haven't been able to find a lease and move out of their shelter beds. So it has taken much longer than 90 days. On average, we're looking at around 180 days.
And then one question on the data that you showed, and I think I gleaned it later. The chart you showed with the numbers going up year over year, that was a Ventura County number?
That is a county number.
And I saw in the county number, like 1,200 in that range, and yet I saw in the other graphs, numbers that I added in my head really quick, which were much higher. What was included in the second numbers that wasn't in the?
Yeah, so I think you may be speaking to like the subpopulation numbers. So the original numbers, we're looking at maybe the unsheltered number. And then the second graph is sheltered plus our unsheltered numbers. And then the, the third graph is subpopulation. So those are typically duplicated. So somebody could be reporting two of those or more categories.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lidster.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your report. I, I want to, and this may be a basic question. I'm trying to understand better the structure and the reporting mechanism. You, who do you report to? You started by saying that you are federally funded. It's a HUD program. But obviously, you talk to VCOG and, and the county is involved, and you get funds from the state. Who, I mean, are you ultimately responsible to a specific government entity? Or you just kind of glean from all of them?
Thank you, Councilmember. I probably should have started with, we, we serve as staff out of the county executive office.
Okay, that's.
So I am a county of Ventura employee, although my charge is a program director over the Continuum of Care, which operates separately from the county. So the county executive office is considered the administrative entity over all the funding. So we manage the grants. We administer those programs locally, and we make sure that our subcontracts are in alignment with HUD standards.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And that was going to be my second question, what, how, what kind of county oversight there is? Because ultimately, the county bears the burden for social health, mental health issues, or funding, et cetera. Is that accurate to state?
Yes, so the county does have the Human Services Agency, right? Behavioral Health Agency, Healthcare Agency. So a lot of what we were talking about earlier with wraparound services, those are really county-provided services where we have sort of this cross-sector collaboration in a lot of the supportive housing or even in shelters. We bring services there.
And I appreciate that. And your statistics about the different housing that's being, types of housing that's being provided, et cetera. Where is that predominantly being provided?
Can you repeat that?
Well, I'm just trying to understand predominantly, some of your, your, where the housing that, whether it be transitional housing, et cetera. Where geographically would you, is it, is it meeting where you have your largest numbers of, of homeless?
I would say so. The majority of supportive housing, transitional housing, and even our shelters are West County, right? A lot of it concentrated in Oxnard, Ventura. But then, of course, we have our homeless numbers that have increased in Thousand Oaks and even in Simi Valley. So really looking to make sure that we're providing some more support in those areas.
Got it. And I just had one more question. I, you talked about, I liked your pathway that you, if I remember the slide, that no matter where someone enters, that they get the services, et cetera. And you spoke about the importance that calling 211 would, would be a great resource. So my question was, who answers that? And how, how does, how is that directed specifically towards you or the Continuum of Care?
Yeah, thank you. So we do have a contract with Interface that oversees the 211 call center. We train a portion of their staff to be HMIS-certified. And they also get training on how to do assessments by phone, make sure their trauma informs, and that they understand where to make referrals to.
So, and this is just a follow-up to that. If we were happen to come in contact with someone who we know is, is immediately struggling with an issue, is it best to say, call 211? Or is it best to say, call the Samaritan Center? They're the best? I mean, what is, or call all of the above? What is, what is, what is your suggestion?
It sort of depends on the situation.
Sure.
Right? And so I hate to say that, but it's true. So a lot of times, calling 211 can kind of direct you to where is the next step. But ultimately, the services of where someone is located, that's really what's best to know, right? So Samaritan Center being a day services center, having those, those direct in-person services is really what's best in those moments.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Well, you already answered a couple of the questions I had. But just sake of understanding, someone that's homeless, recently homeless, and they don't really know where to start, how would they end up in the system? How would that typically take place?
Yeah, so we do have street outreach teams, as well as backpack medicine that work with law enforcement across the county. So a lot of times, if someone's unsheltered, our law enforcement partners, behavioral health, street outreach teams typically know who they are. If they're new, newly homeless, that is with our street outreach teams, that's kind of the best place to start.
Okay. And if someone is unsheltered in Simi, and they, they were going to get help, where would they need to go to?
Yeah, so in Simi Valley, the Samaritan Center as a day service site is really the location where most people are going for assistance. And not that we don't have other services through the county, but it just may not be on a regular basis. We have the Human Services Agency that actually has what we call an intake and eligibility center, Employment Services Center as well in Simi Valley. So those are also pathways to get connected.
Okay.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had another thought, another question. We just did the, the count, a day and time, what's it called?
Point and time count.
Point and time.
Yeah.
And, and it was eye-opening to participate in that process for a couple of reasons. One, to actually go to where our unhoused population are. But the second was how grossly inefficient that system is for counting. And yet, it might actually be the best methodology for getting it done. Can we conceive of another way to have better, more than yearly data? And if we did have that data, would be useful for solving the problem?
Thank you, Councilmember. So the HMIS system ultimately is where we capture all that data on a regular basis. And we do report that regularly or quarterly to our Continuum of Care Board. So ultimately, a lot of the grants that we have are addressing some of those issues across the county. So HMIS is really our go-to for data. Now, this point-in-time count is a requirement by HUD in order for us to qualify and receive Continuum of Care grant funding. That was authorized and approved under Congress, and it's still in place today. So that would be the avenue to make that change.
Well said.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Funding, I didn't even think about that. So, and I'm a banker, you would think I would think about the money first. So the funding we, you get for your department is from state and fed. Now, we're referring everybody here in Simi Valley to our Samaritan Center. Does any of that funding go to our Samaritan Center?
They did receive a grant through the Continuum of Care for street outreach funding, however fairly limited. It's under Emergency Solutions Grant Funding, also known as ESG through federal. So it's fairly restrictive on what they can use it for. Mostly, street outreach efforts to connect people. But I know the Samaritan Center would like to expand.
Exactly. And they're the only thing here on the, on the east side. We're the stepchild. So is there a way for your area to give them additional services? Or do you already do that?
So the county does provide services in the city of Simi Valley. So like the street outreach or Behavioral Health, Healthcare Agency, as well as backpack medicine. So some of those ways are the ways we support. But ultimately, it would be extremely beneficial for the Samaritan Center to be able to expand that in the, in the following year. that in the, in the following year. All of our grant funds, they have to apply through a competitive process, and that's through a request for proposals.
So we need to get them assistance if they need it. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item four, public statements. Mr. Mayor, since there are no public hearings under Agenda Item Five this evening, Agenda Items Four and Six are combined, and the City Council will hear public statements under Agenda Item Four. Agenda Item Four and Six are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public statement, Item Four, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin public statements.
Please proceed.
Thank you. The first speaker is John Lapper.
John Lapper, Simi Valley resident, Mayor Thomas and City Council. Happy New Year, and congratulations to the newly-elected, re-elected, and incumbents. While health concerns have sidelined me this week, has been a good week. As some of you may know, I organized a Governor DeSantis peaceful civil protest at the Reagan Library yesterday, thanks to Simi Valley PD Josh McAllister and others for communicating with me. As conveyed to them, I anticipated no issues from our attendees and expected no opposition to be concerned with. We did not even utilize our own security and did not obstruct the event or traffic. Being flipped off and thumbs down offered some entertainment value. As a resident taxpayer, I am concerned that six Simi Valley Police Department patrol cars with probably 12 officers sat for three to four hours, literally doing nothing. If that show of force was to protect us, I thank you. To what had to be the most boring shift, I apologize to the officers allocated. But obviously, I'll respect the professional threat assessment team. I'll now move forward with some loose ends that went nowhere with the last City Council and Mayor Mashburn. To Mayor Protem Judge, I expect another four years of you believing I am not relevant in Simi Valley. To Councilman Rocky Rhodes, I expect nothing from you until you apologize for wrongfully joining Mike Judge in leading an effort to block my nomination to the nonpartisan, non-binding Neighborhood Council, District Four, made up of 14 residents, and then basically advising the City Council that he did not want John Lapper and his Facebook viewpoints representing him on the Neighborhood Council. Onto a serious note, Simi Valley PD Motorcycle Traffic Officers. We currently have one to patrol 40 square miles in Simi Valley. In talking to Police Chief Shorts, he told me he has two fully operational motorcycles just sitting in the police garage. Mayor Bashburn considered them a liability and would have been happy if we had none. Most realize they are the most effective deterrent to speeding, distracted driving, and prevention of traffic accidents. I encourage Mayor Thomas to do the research and advocate two more motorcycle patrol officers. And lastly, I'd like an update on the, of the 63 eucalyptus trees on Central Railroad that were all to be removed last year due to a flawed staff report and subsequent vote. Fortunately, the trees received a reprieve due to the efforts of Councilwoman Lister, myself, and residents in the area. To the best of my knowledge, they have so far survived a very harsh winter. Had they been removed, I can only imagine the flooding and erosion in the area of Central Railroad. Moving forward, let's see some town halls from our City Council members so that we can discuss our concerns in a greater than three-minute speech. Thank you.
Anika Sumby.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, councilmembers. My name is Anika Sumby. I'm the Executive Director of the Samaritan Center. I'd like to make a comment on the recent discussions around canceling our task force on homelessness. Since I've started in my position, I've only attended two task force meetings. They are held quarterly, and the last one was canceled. The meetings have been very informative, especially when being new, but I do agree with Mayor Protem Mike Judge that nothing actionable has happened. If something doesn't work, we need to just ask, what can we do to make it better and worthwhile? Rather than canceling it, I'm hoping we can look into options to change the way it's currently run. A possibility would be to get more other local nonprofits involved. We need goals and we need action plans. Whilst we, as service organizations, can keep working on improving lives where possible, without the city's support, we can't make as much of an impact. And the Samaritan Center and the city have built a great working relationship, and I really appreciate that. It's this cooperation and our partnership that makes us strong. We do, however, need to find a way to keep our community informed and involved as well. I also hope that we can get back to meeting in person and have time for questions and comments from our community, as well as raise awareness about the task force in the first place. Yes, our homeless population isn't as bad as in other places nearby, for example, the valley, but if we don't keep working on it, it will get worse. On top of this, our number of households with food insecurities have more than doubled, meaning if we don't do enough to prevent homelessness in the first place, we're going to have a much bigger problem further down the line. My understanding is that the task force on homelessness serves as an advisory board for the City Council to coordinate and strengthen our efforts to address homelessness in Simi Valley. All of the other larger cities have dedicated committees and commissions. For example, the Oxnard Commission on Homelessness, Thousand Oaks Ad Hoc Homelessness Committee, and the City of Ventura Hope Subcommittee. Each of these groups bring items to the City Council for consideration. This could be Simi Valley's model as well. The collaboration between the county, city, different nonprofits, and community partners is really important to implement change for a better future for our homeless community members. I agree, we need to change the task force, but canceling isn't the solution. Let's work together and find ways to make it better. Thanks for your time and for listening to me.
Doug Landon.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and councilmembers. My name is Doug Landon. I'm with the Board, on the Board of Directors at the Samaritan Center. I'd like to thank the City of Simi and staff for the great support we received from, at the Samaritan Center. We know you care greatly about all the members within our community. I'd like to take a moment to reflect on a recent event and comment about the importance of addressing homelessness and food insecurities in Simi. On January 24th, I participated in the Ventura County Homeless Point In-Time Count in Simi Valley, along with 40 other volunteers, concerned citizens, and even councilmembers. As I chose to canvass my route by riding my bike, looking for community members to count with a possibility, who were unhoused, living in, on the street or in their cars. During my ride, I ran across a 30-year-old woman sitting on the bike path in desperation, with hardly a jacket and clothes to wear, in the east part of the town. Her name was Sally. Broke my heart to see her. As I continued on my way, I came across an elderly brother and sister who was living in their car. They had lived in their car for more than 10 years in Simi Valley. And then another gentleman, his name was Mark, he was in his 40s, sleeping in his car at a nearby park. Each of these people had their own story with different life-changing circumstances leading to their homelessness. For the most part, the unhoused in Simi Valley seems pretty invisible to the public. However, at the Samaritan Center drop-in facility, we're seeing an increase in unhoused clients and people needing food and assistance. When hearing about the possibility of the homeless task force going away, I began thinking, here is an opportunity to create something new, relevant to the changing times and needs of our community. What would it look like if we had a committee where nonprofits in Simi could network about the services and needs for the unhoused and people in need? What would it look like if experts and organizations could team up and address underlying causes that lead to homelessness, starting with youth? What would it look like if increased networking with Ventura County COC regarding state and local funding, lessons learned, and best practices to address the unhoused population in Simi? What would it look like if community members would join in, learn, ask questions regarding the unhoused, their challenges, and how they can help? And then finally, having city staff and officials participate in the meetings in supportive initiatives and actions to better address the unhoused and expand supportive services? The name of the meeting committee, commission, collaboration, steering committee is not important, but the agenda and actions to help homeless people and with people with food insecurities is. I heard a quote recently that's relevant to this discussion from a gal named Jan Zarkowski. Goes like this, "There's a lot that happens around the world we can't control. We can't stop earthquakes, we can't prevent droughts, and we can't prevent all conflict. But when we know where the hungry and homeless and sick exist, then we can help." I ask you to consider reorganizing the homeless task force into something new and relevant and responsible. Thank you.
Gina Trunkali.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and City Councilmembers. I'm also here to speak about the Task Force on Homelessness. And while I understand Mayor Protem Judge's concerns about having a task force that may be ineffective, or, you know, not really meeting up to its potential, you know, we should always look at those things, and we, we want to make sure what we have going on is making the best use of staff time. But I echo the, the concerns and the ideas put forward by the previous speakers, Anika Sumby, and I don't remember the other gentleman's name, but I think that we should take another look at the Task Force on Homelessness, reinvent it, if it's not meeting its potential, and, you know, see what we can do with it. Homelessness does exist in Simi Valley. It's not quite at the proportions of the city of LA, but it is there, and we don't want it to be a crisis. Like, you know, I think that it's best to be proactive, and I think the Task Force on Homelessness, you know, gives us an opportunity to be proactive. And, you know, that is the responsibility of, you know, our city government, is to look at the, the safety and well-being of all of its residents, whether they be housed or unhoused. And so I, I feel strongly that, let's take another look at the Task Force on Homelessness and see if we can reinvent it and make it something better and, you know, keep it part of our, you know, city government action. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, Mr. Lapper, it's good to see you back. Hope you're doing well. Okay. And I agree with some of the speakers in regards to, let's refocus and relook at the homelessness task force. The way it is set up, it is not working for us, and it's, like Mayor Protem Judge said, we're not accomplishing anything with it. So let's look and see if there is a way for us to do that. You know, Samaritan Center is all we have here in Simi. I shouldn't say all, because you are the all for our homeless situation. So we need to make sure that you're getting the support that you need from, whether it be county-involved, whether it's city-involved, whether it's council-involved. So that right there, if you're asking us to look at that, I feel that we have a responsibility to do that, and to maybe work with you on doing that, and, and with our city manager. He's got a lot of experience in, you know, over the years with all this stuff. So I, I think that was a good idea, so I appreciate all of you coming out to speak, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lapper, thank you for setting the bar so low. I think I will be able to exceed your expectations. The other speakers, the words that I wrote down, revolve, reorganize, and reinvent, was what I heard, and I echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Kavanaugh, that this is not, the, the, talk about the task force, and even if it were to go away, does not say that we don't recognize that there is a problem to be addressed and solved. And doing it in an evolved, reorganized, reinvented way is exactly what we're going to be discussing later. So kudos to you for speaking out. Thank you for sharing those things that they're going to add to the conversation.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lapper, it is good to have you back, and hope that health issues don't keep you away. And I do think, and I, and I know that we are going to be having a report eventually about the eucalyptus trees, and so I, I look forward to that discussion. I know that they are actively looking at it, and I, too, wondered what this, what all of the water has done to their, their health and, or not. And so I, anyway, I think it's, I appreciate your reminding us of that commitment. And to those who spoke about homeless services and needs in our area, I'm looking forward to the discussion later. Obviously, it's critical that we examine the whole thing and not just, not just discuss the name, which I think is subtly what was being suggested, that we, we recognize our responsibility here. And, and thank you again for your comments, your, your service, and your passion. Much appreciated.
Council, Mayor Protem Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking. Basically, you kind of missed my point, sort of the newspaper a few months ago, about talking about this task force, which we're going to talk about later. So I'm going to leave my comments for then, but Councilwoman Lister mentioned something last week when we were talking about our housing element, similar to how government puts something in place that can never be taken away. Same thing with useless bureaucracy. If we don't need it, if it's not doing what it needs to do, it needs to go away, because it's a waste of time and effort. That's all I'm saying. We'll talk about it more later tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Regarding motor units in the police department, we are doing research, and we will be bringing that topic forward for discussion. No guarantees where it's going to go. And again, Task Force on Homelessness, I think every single one of us came into this with the expectation that tonight we would be deciding about the most effective way moving forward, not to walk away from it. So thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, there are no items this evening under the consent calendar or continued business. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 9A, Direction on the Task Force on Homelessness, and Mara Maltz is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. I'll be providing a brief overview of the city's Task Force on Homelessness, including its original objectives, some accomplishments of participating organizations, and how the county of Ventura's Continuum of Care, or COC, provides guidance, direction, and funding to regional service providers who directly address the issue of homelessness within our community. The task force was established in 1999 to evaluate the issue of homelessness with a focus on resource allocation and availability, clarification of roles and responsibilities of the county, other public agencies, and nonprofit service providers, and to develop recommendations to the City Council. Over the years, the task force membership grew from the original 19 to 31 due to enhanced community interest in the issue of homelessness. In September 2017, the City Council modified the membership to only include those who have direct responsibilities in providing the services to allow focused discussion on policy-level items that may influence the service provision of the respective agencies. This resulted in 12 agencies, including the city, to be represented by 13 members. In November 2022, the task force recommended that it be renamed to the Task Force for the Unhoused. While considering that recommendation in January 2023, the City Council requested that a broader discussion of the future of the task force and possible renaming be brought back at a later date, which brings us to this evening. Other recent recommendations of the task force include encouraging the city to seek project home key funding should a viable opportunity present itself, the endorsement of implementing a pilot safe park program in 2020, and the city's participation in the Ventura County-wide homelessness MOU in 2019. Additionally, participating organizations have achieved many service enhancements, including Project Room Key during COVID-19, comprehensive service listings for East County, East Ventura County, increased access County, increased access to mental health services, construction of additional affordable housing units within the city, annual warming shelter for the cold weather months, and year-round access to dinner sites throughout the community. As mentioned previously, the task force consists of 13 members. They are two city council members, three service provider representatives, in addition to representatives from our state senator or assembly member's office, Ventura County District Force Supervisor's Office, Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura, Ventura County Healthcare and Human Services Agencies, Simi Valley Unified School District, Ranch of Simi Recreation and Park District, and the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce. As noted on the screen, all but three of these agencies are active participants of the COC, with many receiving funding, providing services, receiving direction, and/or serving on the governance board. As you heard earlier this evening, the COC provides a comprehensive regional approach to addressing the issue of homelessness within the county. That does not mean that the city does not have a role in the issue. However, it does mean that the city works in partnership with the COC to ensure that the issue is being addressed locally and services are accessible to our residents. The COC directly oversees the pathways to home coordinated entry system, housing and service system coordination, serves as the lead agency for the HMIS for data-driven solutions, and informing the direction of the CEO's office on service provisions. As Ms. Harkey stated earlier, this is all done through the collaboration of the 34 partnering agencies and the governance board, of which the city is an active participant at a staff As the city council discusses the future direction of the task force, it is reminded to consider the task force recommendation to modify its name to the Task Force for the Unhoused. This recommendation was based on the changing vocabulary surrounding the issue of homelessness and consistent with a shift of many nonprofit organizations. However, it should be noted the Samaritan Center surveyed 16 clients the day of, the day the recommendation was made, and 11 either preferred the term homeless or had no preference between the two terms. This concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Councilmember Rhodes.
All right, get to go first. Thank you for the presentation, and I think that graphically displays the crossover element of our Task Force on Homelessness and what the Continuum of Care is already doing. Of the successes, there was a whole slide of things that went well. Of those successes, how many of those would not have happened if we did not have a Task Force on Homelessness since I think it was driven probably through the Continuum of Care?
So many of those, the recent successes of Project Room Key was very much driven through the Continuum of Care. Many of the others were just service enhancements as the governmental response at the county level has evolved over the years and recognizing the need to address the resource allocation as well as the accessibility of resources for East County. And a number of the other successes are of our individual nonprofits. They weren't directed by the task force, they weren't recommended by the task force, it wasn't as a result of direct task force action.
The representation of Simi on the Continuum of Care is currently by staff only?
Myself on the governance board.
Do you think that if we evolved the, our current committee and said we want to participate more fully in the Continuum of Care, would council support on that task for, on that be helpful?
So many communities either have an elected representative or they have an executive level manager, such as city managers or assistant city managers. However, it's not a unilateral placement, so the Continuum of Care tries to ensure that it has a balanced membership. And so there's the opportunity for one of our, one of our council members to be nominated and possibly appointed to the Continuum of Care, but there's not a designated seat for Simi. I hope that answers the question.
It does. I might have more. I'm formulating though.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, and thank you for your, for your, all your hard work, Mara. I know that your heart is there and you do much. As you were presenting who, the history, historically started with, with 19 and then it burgeoning to 31 members, and then it is, in 2017, it was reduced to 13 people, and then you showed the list of who those entities were. I was surprised that there weren't more, maybe some of the providers of services, particularly when it comes to food insecurity. I guess I was surprised that there weren't more of the nonprofits or religious organizations that are very involved in feeding the homeless. Are they, do they have a voice, active at the table?
Absolutely. So the three, I should have been more clear, the three service provider representatives, those are kind of roaming seats, if you will. So those aren't a designated agency to agency. It's the respots for any given meeting that service providers can participate in. When we had the membership of 31, we had representation of pretty much anyone and everyone who was interested and/or touched the issue. And frankly, it was not productive in terms of, these are Brown Acted meetings, we had to have quorums, we weren't able to consistently get quorums, and it wasn't contributing to the value of the discussions or bringing forward. It was bringing forward a lot of ideas at times, but not actionable ideas, and no community responsibility assigned as a result of those ideas being brought up. So the scope of it got outside of the scope of a governmental advisory board. And so when we pared it down in September of 2017, it was brought down to the 13 membership of the best representation that actually has an influence on the service delivery within our community. And that's why the three service providers are kind of roving seats. So depending on what the agenda items are, we can reach out to more targeted participation to ensure that the most appropriate service providers are at the table for any recommendations that might be made. But pretty consistently, those representatives tend to be the same involved individuals, including from the Samaritan Center.
And maybe that then answers my, my second question, which was, when you said it was Brown Act, that these are publicly noticed meetings. Did you, where are they held and did you find that the public or, or even patrons or clients attended or participated?
So depending on what the topic has been, so backing up a little bit, when we went through that restructuring, there was another layer to that beyond just the membership. It was the focus and the nature of the discussions that were happening. As Annika referenced earlier, it's a good resource for gaining information, but what had happened over time is it became a resource and referral presentation opportunity as opposed to a discussion-focused forum. So when we did the restructuring back in 2017, we also split things off and created case management contacts with our police department, which has since been handed off to the police officers assigned to the issue of homelessness. We also did quarterly, the month prior to the task force meetings, we would also do quarterly resource meetings with the community until COVID hit. And not because there wasn't a need for resources during COVID, but everyone was being babarded through many different mediums with resources. So we felt, given the stress on the system and everyone that was trying to respond to the public health emergency, it wasn't the most productive use of our, our time or of the attendees' times. So that meeting was really focused on sharing the resources and information to make sure that people knew how they could connect to services and making sure our nonprofits had an opportunity in an informal environment to collaborate, to network, and things of that nature. And then lastly, we would then have the task force meetings that were supposed to be focused on policy development. And that kind of was the comprehensive restructuring that happened back in 2017.
Got it. And so, and in that midst, just to follow up on what is that, partly what I was asking, were clients involved in attending or being, you know?
Individuals who've experienced homelessness under our prior structure had a seat on the task force. And the participation, you know, was, was hit or miss depending on what was going on. However, as a public meeting, anyone and everyone is allowed and encouraged to attend if they're interested in the topic. So we have the opportunity for public statements. The meetings are not as rigidly, you know, administered because we do have a little bit more flexibility, there's no public hearings, we don't have the same legal constraints. So we can take public comment at each item on the agenda if that's how we think it's, you know, beneficial. So we have had members of the public participate at varied times based upon the interest of the topics of the agenda items.
Is the meeting held here or in the library or?
So it previously was held in the City Hall Community Room, and then we had several large participations, so we permanently moved it to the library. And then during COVID, we actually moved it to Zoom, which improved our attendance overall because, as noted, many of the members are coming from West County. So for them to be able to participate via Zoom and not have the additional commute time, it really improved the attendance during COVID.
Got it. And one of the successes, or one of the things that came out, you mentioned was the safe, well, let me back it up. One of, one of the programs was the Safe Park Program, which I know we, we approved and it was experimental and it had mixed success. Would you say that that program was a byproduct or product in any way of that task force? Or was it just something completely evolved outside of that task force, but then it was just discussed as well there?
So that program was formulated by staff and then brought for feedback before being presented to the council. And I, if my memory serves me correctly, there was no modifications made from the feedback at the task force. So virtually what staff came up with in partnership and discussion with our service providers and presented to the task force is what got presented to the council. So it was just kind of an interim step to see if there was any additional public comment, but it didn't yield any significant feedback at that time.
Got it. Okay. And I, one last question, if that's all right, and then I'm sorry, I'll let someone else. If you were to envision the perfect task force or, or entity, does it exist? Can it exist? What are your thoughts about that that would be helpful?
So I think if I go back to the stated intent when the task force was formed, that intent has been accomplished and kind of concluded with the evolution of the Continuum of Care, the enhanced services available countywide, things of that nature. However, the work that's happening at a staff level, and Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, will continue to happen at a staff level. So if there are, we have hosted various like forums and opportunities for both networking as well as exposing individuals to what is out there that were not within the constraint of the task force format. So they were separately held, and if that need arises, we would continue doing that. The one thing I would like to point out is that both the task force, as well as now our housing division, our housing section, as well as our community projects grant are all now under the same leadership, which is under my purview. So bringing those all under gives us a lot more flexibility and a lot more informed judgment of where we need to kind of flex city staff attention, community outreach, and education. And we will continue to offer collaborative opportunities and bring things forward at a staff level. So to that point, I recognize the concerns that were brought up by members of the public, but I think that those concerns don't necessarily have to fall within the structure of the task force and that staff will continue doing what staff has done. Historically, looking back, I've been assigned to the task force, I think, since 2012, so over a decade, either as the direct staff report or the deputy director providing oversight. And we've had a number of opportunities over the years with different goals adopted and soliciting agenda items. And honestly, the majority of items that the task force have been staff-driven and brought forward. And I think that you can do it more effectively outside of a Brown Acted meeting at a staff level, working with the community, than trying to do it through identified community partners who have their bosses that they adhere to as well.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you, Mara. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mara. You kind of touched on a little bit of where I was going. So the initial or the original idea behind the task force has pretty much been implemented and then taken care of. So we're kind of at a standstill right now. But what I'm hearing from our community, oh, let me back up. The current setup of our task force is really hardly anyone in Simi Valley. It's, it's got a lot of other people involved. My thought process from listening to the people here is we should have a group, whether it be a committee here at the city, whether it be a group the Samaritan Center leads, whether it be a groups the Free Clinic leads, of Simi Valley's resources and Simi Valley needs so that we can focus on what do we need in Simi Valley. The COC can be a member of our group and/or you are our coordinator to the COC. Because that way, we're focusing more on what we need here in, in our community, which is different than what more, what Ventura needs. I have a branch in Ventura, so I see the, the homeless there a lot. And so they have a higher population of unhoused homeless than we do. But I think we still have a responsibility to our homeless people here in Simi Valley and to our Samaritan Center, who is our only resource on a regular daily basis. But we have churches that do pads, we have council members that have even helped out at pads, we have you do the meals, other churches do the meals. So I would like to see more of a coordination of us in here in Simi Valley and with our PD. And it doesn't necessarily have to be city-led. I, I'm not sure exactly where we want to go because what you said is if the city's not leading it, we can, we don't have to do the Brown Act type situation. We can maybe organize it a little bit so that it's not really a lot of work on the part of our, part of you and your team. But yet, at the same time, we can have another lead agency within our community and we be an active part of that. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say?
So what I'm hearing is very similar to the resource coordination that kind of stalled out because of COVID. And when I say stalled out, it was an assessment that it was, we would just be repeating what everyone was hearing from 50 different inputs, and we didn't want to be overwhelming the system when there was a public health crisis happening, right? So I do think that we can still coordinate and collaborate with our local service providers. I think from the task force standpoint, it's that the county is the primary service provider, and that's why there's so much representation from county services, because they have a responsibility and obligation to provide those services to the city of Simi Valley as well. So we definitely can continue with the, with the resource coordination meetings, which were being held on a quarterly basis. So we can reinvigorate those now that things are back in person. We do have some turnover that's happened at our nonprofits over the past several years. One of the challenges is, and I'll be very open about this, is that if the city isn't the one coordinating it, it doesn't always seem to happen. And at the same time, once we coordinate it and everyone gets acclimated, then apathy sets in, and then we have this conversation saying that we need these things, but when we were doing these things, no one was attending. So it's that, that cycle. So we can continue to do them on an as-needed basis instead of on a quarterly basis. We can host meet and greets with our nonprofits and dovetail that with our community projects grant program to try to build some collaboration and networking and things like that, which we tried to do at the start of the CPG program initially. So there's a lot that we can do on an informal basis that still involves city staff but isn't through a Brown Acted meeting and doesn't require recommendations to the city council. We could just at staff discretion help facilitate that community dialogue.
Right. Because I think that's what I'm looking for is more the resources. We have food banks throughout the city that not everybody knows about, you know, specific church, well, Samaritan Center, you have your own food bank, but churches have them. We have Siwa now that is, that is here in town. And so they all need to work together, I think, and, and that's what we don't have here in, in town. We have, we don't have a manna food bank like, like Keneho does. So where they do the whole thing. We have various entities that are helping our community in, in various ways. So I would like to, some type of coordination amongst all of those. It sounds kind of like our resource, what'd you call it, the resource?
Resource coordination meeting.
Resource coordination meeting is somewhat what I'm looking for.
Yeah. And if I may, I don't mean to jump into the discussion, but the two issues are, one, making sure that the resources that are available in Simi Valley are coordinating their efforts, and which Mara has done, the Resource Coordination Committee, whether that's a quarterly meeting or an, an as-needed meeting, I think that's probably the right path to go down because we're going to be more effective. And I do think we need to lead it, sorry, because that's the only way it's going to get done. When you introduce elected officials into these meetings, now you're turning it into a Brown Acted meeting and it, honestly, all due respect, it kind of slows things down.
Okay, so we won't be there.
So having it, having it staff-led, staff-coordinated, to meet with the, the resource agencies that are out there is going to be a much more effective path forward.
That would be something that I would, I think would be more beneficial to our community. And we can, everyone can coordinate with each other and find out a little bit more about what's available and then have staff coordinate with the COC because they are providing a lot of the services already that are not being provided by our other entities.
Yeah. It's a matter of getting the information out there too. And we can work with our- And we can work with our, Samantha Argabright, our PIO, Assistant City Manager, can work to get the information out there through the various sources, working with Samaritan Center, with getting, and the other resource agencies to get the information out as well. So it's a collective effort.
Do we still have the 2-1-1 booklet that we used to have that years ago?
The Blue Book?
I guess it was a two-
That went away a long time ago.
I'm aging myself, okay? I worked with a former one. But it was a 2-1-1 book with all the different-
I don't think they publish that anymore.
Okay. It wasn't ours? It wasn't the city?
So we had a Directory of Social Services, which was done at the behest of the task force at the onset. And I will tell you, being in the Community Services Department at the time, that was a beast to update, because as soon as you updated it, something was wrong, so it went into print. And that was before we had a dynamic website. However, 2-1-1 is now a much better resource, because they can keep the information live, and you're calling in and talking to a person that has ready access to live data sets versus a static resource that may have been updated. And also, the County of Ventura now puts out a East Ventura County Guide to Resources and Services that didn't exist previously as well. So the information collection and dispersment by other entities has vastly improved over the years. So we no longer do our Directory of Social Services. 2-1-1 doesn't do their Blue Book, but we do have 2-1-1 handouts that we refer to people. And we do, based on, kind of going back to Ms. Harky's response, based on the situation, we will, at a staff level, either intervene when we get made aware of somebody and refer them to 2-1-1, or the Samaritan Center, or connect them with our Neighborhood Resource Officers who are assigned to the issue of homelessness. So we still make those connections to services, even though we're not producing a hard copy booklet.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mara. Is that available somewhere on our website? Even the first step?
We have a page dedicated to homeless services.
Okay.
I would have to review its content, because it's not coming to mind right now, but we do have information. And then based on the outcome of tonight's discussion, then we will likely be revamping that to kind of redirect and focus as directed tonight.
The reason I'm asking is, on social media, I saw where somebody had come across a homeless woman, and they wanted to help her, and they weren't sure where to go. And it was over the weekend. So that's kind of why I'm just asking that, if there's somewhere on there that we can guide them, at least somebody can go to the city website and homeless assistance or something, and then at least get them started. That would be great.
And we can more regularly push out the information through Samantha Argabright, through the PIO function, to ensure that we are reinforcing those messages and access to resources throughout the community. So we'll work on that, too.
Okay, thanks. You always do a great job. Thanks, Mara.
And I know 2-1-1 is on our mental health page on our website.
Councilmember, Mayor Protim Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. I want to first point out the treasure of our community. Mara's professionalism and dedication to the task force, to all that she does here for our city is amazing to me, always has. But you heard people say during this whole thing, one of the things that was brought up on the list up here, the, I don't know if it's on that slide or not, but it was the Safe Park thing. Safe Park thing, in my opinion, maybe it's just my opinion, because I'm glorifying myself. Before I retired, I was a full-time police officer, Los Angeles Police Department, and the Boise law came across my desk as being a training coordinator for my division, something I had to teach all the new officers and all the officers in the division, because it was a brand-new law that went down and was, in fact, effective nationwide. That day, I called the city manager. I can't remember if it was Brian or if it was Eric before him, and said, "We have to have a meeting that day." Came here straight off from work, said, "Hey, this is what we have to do. We got to find someplace to put people that are living in their cars, otherwise we're not going to be able to stop them from living in neighborhoods and stuff like that, because that's what the law says." So we did. And that's what pushed it forward from that point on. It didn't come from the task force. It came from council members doing their due diligence and following national laws. We are not a homeless services provider. Our city is not. We count on the county. We count on the state. We count on the federal government to provide the funds for the homeless services. We do distribute, but we are not that provider. Those monies don't come from the city of Simi Valley. So that's another thing. A lot of people have this envisionment of the task force being a place people can go and immediately have a place to live afterwards. Not happening. It's not the way it happened. The task force, just like you've heard all through the testimony today, basically just regurgitated stuff sent by other agencies, and that was it. Again, it's one of those things that got built on a good premise to make sure the city of Simi Valley was getting all that it was entitled to from the federal government, the county, and the state, which we do now, and which we now have dedicated employees in our city to make sure that that continues to happen. It doesn't have to happen with two council members running a meeting that's Brown Act-coordinated, and really, like it's been said up here, gets in the way of people that work for the city doing their job and getting it done. That's why I propose closing this task force or forming it into something else that is more efficient and gets things done in a much better manner. It's nothing to do with my, I love the things in the paper, the, what has changed since the election? Nothing's changed. I asked to do this six years ago. So that's where we're at. Thank you.
Councilmember Lidster.
Thank you. I wanted to go back to, this might be a question for our city attorney again. And I'm hearing the discussion about the value, and I concur that I would like to see something that coordinates resources, and whether it be quarterly, whether it be, whatever the cycle is appropriate. Because I, too, have concern, as I've seen different, particularly food pantries come and go, and I think that if they knew of each other's existence, they might last longer and might support each other, et cetera, et cetera. So I can see real value in that. But am I hearing you correctly that as a council member, we could not have a council member involved in that meeting? And if we did so, it then has to be noticed? Is that accurate?
No.
Okay.
You're okay. If it's another agency's duly-held meeting, and as long as they provide or they comply with the Brown Act, you can attend. You don't represent, as long as there's not a quorum of our council, you can participate singularly.
It's a staff meeting. It's a meeting coordinated by Mara that would include other resource agencies that provide homeless services. So if one council member could be there and-
Because I want to be-
Participate, but if you have two, now you're a Brown Act.
Okay.
I think the Brown Act would apply when you have a quorum, which could be potentially three. You can do actually an ad hoc committee of two council members.
Ad hoc, so temporary.
Yeah, temporary, assigned by the city council, yes. If this is ongoing permanent, that would change.
So the reason I'm asking these questions is I don't want to abdicate my responsibility or involvement of the council in this discussion and awareness of it, because I think we have an ability to also share information with residents and people about services. Anyway, so I'm trying to understand, if we change the nature of, as Councilmember Kavanaugh is suggesting, and this becomes the Homeless Resource Coordination Council led by Mara, if that were, and we had one council member who was assigned to that council, would that be more nimble, I guess is what I'm asking, and allow, without having to worry about the Brown Act and noticing and all of such responsibility?
I don't think it would be a council as much as, it would be staff-initiated community outreach opportunities with targeted purpose, right? So it would be, you know, one meeting was supposed to be focused on food insecurity. Another might be focused on landlord engagement to help use those VASH and housing choice vouchers, things of that nature. So it wouldn't have a fixed attendance. The attendance would ebb and flow based on the topic at hand and what we were trying to share with the community. That being said, you know, I'd never mind if council members show up and observe me while we're doing our work, but we could also create the kind of feedback loop back to the council after each of those, to make sure that you're fully aware and that you have access to either the outcomes, so the new programs or services or collaborations that might be coming, or at least at very minimum, the services and resources that were shared with community members, so that you're just as informed as the community members that you're trying to inform. So we can make sure to create that feedback loop to help all of the council members receive that information. But as I mentioned, if one, and as Brian and David said, if one council member wanted to attend because it was something of interest to them, I think we would just ask to be informed in advance to ensure that we don't have a quorum of any council, you know, any three council members present.
And I would definitely stay away from using the name council on any-
Right. I just have a quick question on that. So if you change the topic, you know, each meeting has a specific topic, that's great. Do you also have the ability to do a roundtable, like at the very end? Perfect. Where each participant could express any concerns they have, or what they've got going, or say, "Hey, we're doing a food drive next week," just informational?
Absolutely.
Perfect, okay.
It becomes completely informal, and depending on what's appropriate, and based on those in attendance, we can do any number of formats, and the format might be different each time, based upon the topic or the needs.
I think, sorry, I took your floor. I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. It's fine. And I'm, and I was trying to think, because I know that there's a desire for involvement and participation. I gather, the problem is, maybe this is, I'm trying to think of something similar, the veterans group that kind of ebbed and flowed with whichever council member, and the way it came out of that was a foundation, but that changed. It wasn't assigned, and so different council members attended. So I guess that's what I'm hearing, that is what could be a part of it. We could be noticed, that this meeting is taking place, and one of us could show up, and if too many show up, you say, "Please leave," I guess, so that we don't violate Brown Act. Is that?
Yeah. That might be a possibility, and I think Mr. Gable, maybe perhaps, I don't know, give you a word, go back and provide the city council with maybe further ideas and suggestions, because I don't want to go too far afield from what was actually agendized. I know it's somewhat related.
And I really, and Mara really hit the point, is that when those meetings are done, we'll provide information back to you, a summary of what was discussed of all those things, so all council members have that information, so you would know. And that gives us the opportunity to also modify the website, our website if we need to, and it also is going to drive whatever information we need to push out through the city, and then working with those resource providers out there as well, working collectively as a group, which is really what's important, is everyone is moving in the same direction. All the same information is being pushed out, so everyone has the same information.
And would we clarify that it's for homelessness? So what were you calling it before, just the research? Or, I'm sorry?
They were referenced as the Homeless Resource Coordination Meetings.
Okay. So perfect. So we're still keeping our hands in on the homelessness? Okay.
Both from a prevention and a reactive. So, you know, topics may not focus on the actual current experience of being homeless, but prevention measures, creating greater food stability, affordable rents, those types of things.
And it's showcasing what we have available here in Simi Valley and what we will need, and then we can go to the COC. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yeah, I wanted to, on this topic of this task force, I see it as having two pieces, the forecasting and the planning and the seeking of resources, and then the doing. And what you're talking about at the staff level is you actually get stuff done, can actually move the pieces around the table. I think that if we had a rethinking of this task force from a council standpoint, it would be, how can we participate more fully at the county level and say, what do we need to do to attract the resources from the county to East County, right? So there are things, I think, that would augment what we're doing, have one group actually getting the coordination stuff done, and task us with, how can we help the county and therefore the county help us? Might be a division of the labor that's still in the right context of homelessness.
Well, from my standpoint, you know, I think there's a lot of stuff going on, and all I really care about is making sure that if there's anything that we can do as a city to improve the situation for the providers in our community or for our unhoused, that we do it. So it's not about having another meeting for the sake of having a meeting. It's about where are the needs, making sure that we fulfill them. So that's my goal in this discussion.
I had one other thought, and tell me if this is an inappropriate ask, and that is, we've had a great discussion up here. We have representatives of the Samaritan Center and COC. It'd be interesting to me to hear what their feedback has been on our discussion, but I don't know if that can be done at this point.
You can ask for feedback.
Would any of you guys like to give feedback to the discussion that's been going on here?
Assuming that's okay with the chair, with the mayor.
Go right ahead.
For the record, Jennifer Harky with the Continuum of Care County Executive Office. So thank you, council member. Just based on the discussion today and thinking through, the flexibility of having something that's not Brown Act-run is obviously, it is a better approach, right? Because you have more people at the table and open discussion. We can obviously have representation there from county and COC as well. But like you said, council, I think having more representation from the city as well as participants, right? People with experience is really important, to hear what those needs are. I would also say that my only fear is that, you know, just having Mara as city staff to help represent may be a little bit of a barrier, and I'm trying to figure out what the nexus should be. And I just say that because if there is an idea or a grant fund that we really want to pursue, how do we get that back to all of you? And how do we present it to council? And maybe that is through city staff, but just want to make sure we're not missing that opportunity. Some of the other cities that have commissions or task forces, that's sort of where it starts, is that there are certain grant funds. For example, the Commission on Homelessness in Oxnard will discuss what grant funds are available or what those gaps or needs look like, and then bring something to council from that commission. So just don't want to miss out on that if we go in that direction of resource coordination, which I think does give us the flexibility of having those conversations. Just want to make sure it comes back to all of you. Thanks.
I do want to follow up on what Chen said, and we're already working really great with Mara and her team. It is a great idea. It gives us more flexibility. In an ideal world, I probably would want to see maybe a floating council member that could attend to make sure there is enough visibility. But our first goal is to make a difference, help people, and we do need to connect more as a community. There are so many resources out there. There are so many other nonprofits, and yes, we do send people to other food pantries as well, but we don't talk enough within our community, and this gives us a great chance as long as we have the city council's support and as long as we can see, yes, we can bring discussions back to you and nothing gets missed. I think that is important. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. I was thinking about the proposed having, you know, the staff lead. I think that'd be a great idea. Two things to figure out, so what are the top priorities of this commission? Is it staff figured out, or a collective determination? Is it housing? Is it food? And then who would set that agenda? So those two things are important, that we would, all communities would have input to us on the agenda, whether it's a good or bad idea. That's it. Thanks.
And to speak to that point, the Resource Coordination Meetings, as previously designed, was intended to solicit community feedback to inform future task force agendas. So that has always been the goal, is to engage the community as much as possible, identify gaps, and then be able to move things forward to the task force and eventually the city council as needed. So that would continue from a staff perspective.
And I think that's the advantage of having a meeting that's one not agendized, so that the conversation can go wherever it needs to, and having community participation in it. So I like the idea, when staff comes back to the council and we can hear what's going on, we can offer direction if necessary. I think it makes perfect sense.
I think Mr. Lapper wanted to just say something as well.
Do you mind, Mayor, if you just technically open the public hearing portion real quickly?
Okay.
Public comments?
All right. I'm going to reopen the public comment portion of this meeting. All right, I'm going to reopen the public comment portion of this meeting.
And that was retroactive for the comments that were, sorry, I apologize. And that was retroactive for the comments that were previously made as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm not sure if this is a Simi task force that we would be changing to something else or are, does Camarillo and Oxnard and Ventura all have participation in the task force that we would now not be a part of and they would still have that voice in that organization? Does that make sense?
I, I think I understand your question. With regards to what I am gathering from the council's comments, it would be that city staff would still participate on a regional basis with the Continuum of Care. And then we would refocus staff efforts to do resource coordination meetings that are focused on community input, identification of gaps and needs, as well as the sharing of resources and collaboration among our service providers, nonprofit, faith, community, et cetera.
For services provided in Simi Valley.
Correct.
Yep.
And a council member could attend the meetings as long as we only had one.
And Mr. Lapper, yeah, Mr. Lapper, I think the 13 members were not the other cities. They were just other participants. So I don't, we're not cutting them out of anything.
It was made up of county members, so.
They were never out of any other cities in our task force.
I don't know, I think Mara has a good handle on where we want to go.
Yes, but she can't make a motion. So. I think. Yeah. Okay, all right.
Do, do we need to discuss, in the agenda, we were discussing the name or?
Well, the task force doesn't, it's not a task force anymore.
I understand.
It's the regional, regional council, staff-led regional councilor.
Okay, on homelessness.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 9B, adoption of a resolution terminating the COVID-19 local emergency, including lifting the moratorium on the cutoff of water services for lack of payment and associated late fees and penalties. Authorization of remote teleconference meetings and rescinding resolution numbers 2020-19 and 2023-07. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2023-10, the resolution of the city council, the city of Simi Valley and the board of directors of Ventura County Water Works District Number Eight, terminating the existence of a local emergency and the authorization of remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Simi Valley, pursuant to Brown Act provisions and rescinding resolutions number 2020-19 and 2023-07. And City Manager Gabler is presenting this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we've had a lot of fun over the last two years. As you're well aware, COVID emergency for Simi Valley started in March 16 of 2020. And we've taken various actions to combat the issues as a result of the pandemic. However, the state of emergency at the state level ended on February 28th of this year. Our ordinance, our resolutions adopting of the, of the state of emergency have been tied to the California state of emergency. And although by the, a limit, by the end of, as a result of the end of the state emergency on, on February 28th, ours technically ended as well. However, we want the council to take a formal action to end the state of emergency in the city of Simi Valley and revert back to pre-COVID times for our issues. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Rhodes.
I'm ready to make a motion.
I'd actually like to ask just a couple of questions if I could before the motion's made, please. If that's right. I absolutely think it's necessary and glad we're doing this. It's most appropriate. My questions are with regards to, part of this motion is that we are ending the, basically, the, the halting of, of turning off water for lack of payment. We are also going to be starting to assess late fees, et cetera. And so what I, actually what I wanted to understand just was, and I think we need to go forward with the resolution, et cetera, but I want to kind of understand how many residents are delinquent with their water payments? What is the magnitude of, that we're going to have to play catch-up with in terms of, and I'm sorry, I should have called and asked this earlier today before putting you on the spot right now.
There was an email that we had sent to the council. There is about $2.5 million in delinquent water bills, if I remember correctly. I believe the majority, there were 700 accounts that owed more than $30, if I remember correctly. State law currently provides, we, we have in our, our ordinance the provisions for turning off water. There's the, and it complies with state law. There are a number of notices. It is really about a 90-day process from first notice to, to a turnoff at that point in time. And we have a number of customers that have just never paid over the last several years. So we're, and we, we did get some relief from the state of California through the ARPA, or through federal money that came down to pay off, to pay some delinquent water bills. And even those customers still continue not to pay, so.
Do we have a mechanism for, basically for petitioning someone who has a hardship or something? Do we have any kind of a mechanism of relief?
Sure, I mean, we, we offer payment schedules on a regular basis. We refer folks to, to local resources that we know that can provide water payments or that have provide, that provide that assistance. We are aware of several in the, in the area that residents do call and, and contact. So we're, we'll, we'll do everything we can to not turn off any water.
And I appreciate that. I just wanted to understand that better and have it discussed. Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
I moved to adopt resolution number 2023-10 to end the COVID-19 local health emergency, including lifting the moratorium on the cutoff of water services for lack of payment and associated late fees and penalties, authorization of remote teleconference meetings as authorized by AB 361 and rescind resolution numbers 2020-19 and 2023-07.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 10A. City council member reports.
Councilmember Rhodes.
I get to go first, huh? Yep. On March 1st, I attended a Clean Power Alliance orientation Zoom call. I've been, as a rookie, assigned to several new committees, which getting up to speed is super interesting, very fun and lots and lots of pages to read. Also on that same day, I got to go and tour the PSC facility and our transit facility, which is absolutely fascinating. And I now know the door of the guys that fix the potholes. And so they can expect some doughnuts soon. We appreciate their hard work. The staff is absolutely amazing. The complexity of things that we have to do in the city that we don't think about, they're thinking about it and they're doing an outstanding job. And it was really an eye-opening tour. On March 2nd, I attended with Mayor Pro Tem Judge the SCAG, horrible acronym, Southern California Association of Governments Joint Committee Meeting, followed by the SCAG Regional Council Meeting. For those who are unfamiliar, SCAG, if, if SCAG were a country, it would represent, I think, 11.9 million people and be the 15th largest economy in the world. And Simi Valley has great representation on this committee. And I will have to confess that in this meeting, I got hope of government again, that it might be okay. The, a topic of discussion was Sacramento says we have to go green in our trucking by a certain date, certain. And we had a presentation from the Truckers Association and the ports that said, this is dumb. And it is impossible to meet. And not only is it impossible to meet, that people that are shipping to the ports recognize that and are changing their contracts and shipping to other ports across the country because they are unsure of our thing. And so where's the hope? The hope is, of the 90-some people in the room, it was a pretty unanimous decision of we have to push back on the, the simplistic view that Sacramento has on laws that they can produce. And so I think there will be actual strength in numbers and we'll be able to push back on that. Following that meeting, I walked a few blocks away to the Clean Power Alliance meeting. And we voted a rate increase on users, but it's going to be sold as a rate increase that's under the rate increase that Southern California Edison gave you. So, awesome. I'm still trying to figure that committee out. And, and I'm an active participant in it and they seem to be appreciative, but I'm not 100% sure. On the 4th, I had the absolute pleasure to attend the Santa Susana Train Depot 120-year celebration, which if you have not gone to the train depot on a Saturday or Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00 and taken the tour, do. I'm going to go back with my family and get the full tour. I had the abbreviated one. I had no idea the, the history of that building and a lot of the history of Simi Valley. Later that day, I attended the ribbon-cutting of 118 CrossFit, Welcome to the Community, Get Us All Fit. On Sunday, I got to attend the Simi Girls Softball Season Opener. Thank you, council, for letting me go and do that. It was absolutely fantastic. I've never done this before. I had a daughter, but apparently missed this whole softball thing. The teams come out in their different costumes with their names. My particular favorite name was the Chicklets. And I think they won the banner award as well. And, and they just such great spirit and just hun, well, there's hundreds of players, but all the parents and everybody out, great event. And then just today, we had a meeting with Festival Properties to do an opening discussion on possibilities of things that can be done up at the mall. And, Mr. Mayor, that's my report.
Councilmember Litzner.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for allowing me to attend remotely last Monday when we had council meeting. I, I know that as of today, that will not ever happen without new, different noticing, but that was, I was, as we've changed our law, but that was, I was grateful that I could be there for my daughter in Florida and also be here for council meeting. So thank you for allowing me to have that privilege. On March 2nd, Thursday, I too attended the joint committee meeting for SCAG with, although I was attending remotely, I believe that council members, Judge and, and Rhodes were in person, if I'm not mistaken. But I was there remotely. And what Councilmember Rhodes was describing was what came out of the regional council meeting, because that's not the meeting, the fun information that I received in the joint committee meeting. But actually, it was a discussion of SoCal Connect and the process of progress. One of the things I took away from that discussion is that growth patterns have been revised and that is affecting certainly where, where and what we're doing. And that's, and that's kind of major, because that very much affects funding and, and what levels we have to meet, et cetera. But that was, it was, it was good to be there in attendance with the other committee members as well. It is a, a large group. And as Councilmember Rhodes mentioned, it reflects and represents, I think it's 180 different cities, if I'm not mistaken. But it is, maybe it's 120, may have got my numbers wrong. But in five counties, anyway. It is, it is good, it is, it is good to have representation though with Simi Valley there. So on Friday, March 3rd, I too, I, I attended a 30-year anniversary for Bill's Quality Auto Care. And I think it's delightful that he, Bill could start from such humble beginnings. And it was a kind of described how he worked and learned parts, et cetera, and was able to open this wonderful automotive center, which I have been taking my car to and can vouch for. But 30 years in business is quite an accomplishment in Simi Valley and, and we are hoping for 30 more. In fact, he discussed some of his succession planning. So it's great to have that in our community. On Saturday, March 4th, I too, with, along with Mayor and Councilmember Rhodes, attended the Santa Susana Depot 120-year celebration. And I will tell you, it was so, such a delightful experience that when I got to the car, I immediately called my husband and said, you need to go. You need to stop what you're doing and hop in the car and attend this event, because it's really one-of-a-kind event. It really was, it was delightful. Just quickly, some of the things I learned, and I, and I have driven past that building many times. I've been there for scout groups there in the park next door, but I've not really taken the tour. And just some of my takeaways, that this Santa Susana Depot, which was founded 120 years ago, was the end of the line for the railroad. So when it was built, the railroad went from, from Los Angeles to Santa Clarita, over to Santa Barbara and then came down. This is before the tunnel was built and Santa Susana Depot was the end of the line. And so we had trains turning around at Tapal Canyon and this was, this was a major hub of activity. And it, huge celebration when the tunnel was actually completed. But this depot is one of 90 that were built along, along the rail system. And there are only six that have remained in existence. And so we are fortunate to have one of those six buildings. And as I understand, that in, it was about 1975, I think, that group, what, basically when it was decommissioned, that a group of, of residents, and thank you to our, Didi, you can appreciate this. Thank you to our Santa, Santa Susana Parks and Rec for their, for their vision. They purchased the building for $1.06. Six cents, of course, was to cover the sales tax. And then moved that building to where it is now located. And it really is an amazing building, the history that's contained therein. Thank you to those docents who spend time giving tours, but really what they've recreated there. I had no idea that the way trains received, that engineer and conductor received their orders was by leaning out of their window and snatching a piece of paper, going 40 miles an hour as they drove by the message stand. Anyway, you'll learn more about trains than you ever knew. So please go take, please go, go take the tour. You will love it. And yes, I too attended the CrossFit grand opening. It was, it's great to have new business in town, appreciate it. And I, it inspired me, I need to be doing more. And also attended, was good to visit with festival people to discuss our, our mall and their vision for how to improve it. Some good things happening there. I wanted to actually end by sharing one thing. I got a phone call today from Mr. Doug Bamforth. And you may have missed him coming. You may have missed him coming to our meetings. He was a regular attendee and bless his heart, he is moved. He now lives in Arizona. He's, and so, and I said, Doug, you can't do that to us. You were a regular. But he, he is, and, and people know him, he was involved with Veterans of, of VFW and he was a chaplain and he had a great Veterans Motorcycle Group. He was just a fixture here. But he now lives in Apache Junction, which is east of Mesa. And he sends his love. He said he may come back for Veterans Day. But I just had to say that he will be missed here in council chambers, giving his encouragement and report. And so, and maybe we can add him to closing in his name. I don't know if we ever do that for someone who's living, but anyway, I just, maybe that's not, maybe that's not appropriate, but anyway, I just wanted to share that. And so. Hopefully he's attending. I, I suspect he will get actively involved. I, I hope so too, wherever he is. So that, that concludes my report for the evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saturday, March 4th, I am so glad you all enjoyed the tour of the Simi Valley Depot. It's a beautiful building. They do a great job. A lot of the expenses there were raised, the funds were raised by their own foundation. So even though Rancho Simi Recreation Park District owns the building and, and does a lot of the expenses for it, they do have a, a small foundation of volunteers that raise a lot of money for the things there. And it's very unique. It's very, it's very awesome, yes. Unfortunately, I was unable to be there because I was attending Santa Susana Boys Baseball Opening Day. And it was great. It was a lot of fun. My little grandson is three and a half and he's playing, if you can call it that. But it was a great turnout. You know, they'd been rained out, all the, all the groups have been rained out. So it was really exciting for everyone to be there. And they, they have, my grandson's team is the Savannah Bananas. And so if you've heard of them, they're almost like a Harlem and Globetrotter baseball team. And I'm like, it's kind of appropriate for four-year-olds out there running around. But it was a great time. The parents and the families there were all excited to, to get started again and it was really good. I, I really enjoy those types of. and it was really good. I, I really enjoy those types of, types of things. My favorite thing is normally on the 6th to attend the Simi Valley Girls Softball Opening Day, but I had my grandson's. I was babysitting and there was no way I was gonna tackle taking them there. But it's good to hear that the Chicklets, Chicklets won. That's Gina Calelo Goodings' team. So yes, she, she goes all out. Gina's a former president of the league and still stays involved and coaches the little ones. And I saw some of the pictures of what she was doing for her team. So she goes all out. So congrats, Gina, to you. And then the last thing was today, this afternoon, Councilmember Litzter and I attended a meeting with the festival representatives to give us some of their ideas of what they're looking forward to doing. And that's it. We only had a week. They did a lot more than I did. I'm sorry. But that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, I too attended the SCAG Regional Council Policy Committee and also the Joint Policy Committee. I won't harp on it. You've heard about what it was about. I'm not gonna go into that again. Friday, March 3rd, I attended the Ventura County Transportation Committee meeting where we had our Strategic Planning Commissioner workshop. Very exciting. And we'll have more when we've put it all on paper for the ideas we put forward. Talk about that later. On Saturday, March 4th, we have an amazing nonprofit in our city that is recognized worldwide for the troops. Their gala was March 4th up at the Reagan Library. And they do an amazing thing by providing care packages for our troops, no matter what branch of service, all over the world. So if you're, if you have a, an inclination to donate, for the troops is a very good cause. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. All right, so let's see here. Wednesday, March 1st, along with Councilmember Rhodes, I attended the PSC facility and transit departments for a tour. The PSC facility, high-tech, very impressive facility. It kind of reminded me of like an evil lair in a James Bond movie, you know? That's how, that's how I saw it. But just amazing, the, the, the process that they go through in treating our, at that plant. Let's see here. Friday, March 3rd, I attended the 30th anniversary of Bill's Quality Auto Care. Really nice guy. I've never met him before. I wasn't familiar with him until that day, but I had a chance to talk to him. And I was so impressed that today I actually referred someone to him. March 4th, can't, couldn't wait to talk about this. Santa Susana Train Depot 120-year celebration. Could not believe the history in that place. I, I, I knew so little about it. I thought that was the original location. So, but loved hearing about how it was done and the fact that they were literally communicating instructions to the train via, you know, paper messages until, I mean, until the 70s. Because of the, even though most of the track communicated by radio, they couldn't communicate through the tunnels or something like that. And so they had to, you know, give them, you know, messages still by hand. But they have a room there with model train thing that was so amazing. I, at first I thought, okay, well, somebody spent probably tens, tens of thousands of hours building this thing. It could never be moved. But then when I found out that it actually represented from the, from the Alameda Corridor all the way up to Washington and bits and pieces of that along the way and the history there. And then the fact that it was, the whole thing was controlled and they actually run it like, like a train system. Between the, the center itself and that, I, I turned around and recommended that they, you know, include that in our tourism marketing for the future. Went over and did a grand opening at CrossFit, 118 CrossFit, really nice couple. Nice operation. I love seeing a new business like that. You know, young couple starting a, a new business. It's, it takes a, a lot of, it's a scary thing, starting a business. And, and so I wish them well. And then, of course, had an opportunity to, by myself, meet with the mall owners today to kind of get a, you know, initial conversation with them and, and kind of made it clear of, you know, of how critical, you know, what they do moving forward is gonna be. And that's the end of my report.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. May I interrupt real quick?
Sure.
I forgot to mention something. I just wanted to congratulate City Manager Brian Gabler and Simi Valley. We are the front page of the Pacific Coast Business Times today and announcing that we've had how well we're doing in bringing companies from other areas into Simi Valley. And so it was a very nice article. So I, I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. So then, at this point, I'm gonna call for any future agenda items. Councilmember Litzter.
Thank you. When, while attending the gala, the gala for, for the troops, I did have a very interesting conversation with a constituent who asked about the possibility of, of bringing Project Lifesaver to our community, which is basically a project with the police whereby strategically, it's strategically designed for at-risk individuals who are prone to life-threatening behavior of wandering. And basically what it does is it provides kind of a tracking system. And so, and I, and I, and I've, and I've spoken with our, with our wonderful chief about it and he's willing to have his staff look at, just investigate a bit. But I wanted to know whether we could have that, just authorization to have it looked at a little bit. It's being done in Camarillo. They have it in 2008, they, they instigated, instigated it with their police. I'd love to see if they found it successful or worthwhile.
We can certainly take a look at it and provide a memo to the council on, on results and if we can implement it.
I, I would appreciate that.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you. And I will say one other thing too, is that today someone talked to me about all the potholes because of the rain that we've experienced. So I'm glad that Councilmember Rhodes knows the right door to knock on, but, so. Anyway, so I, I'm just, just an awareness of that. We, and I know that you're working, but it's funny how rain causes some real issues there. So, thank you.
Okay, then, at this point, I am going to motion that we adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody.